I'm in council, City of Milton, 2018 preliminary budget overview. Can everybody in the audience hear me?
No.
All right. And if at any time you can't, please allow the speaker to finish what they're saying and then let us know if you aren't able to hear us. Thank you. All right, Al?
Okay, we've got a pretty full agenda for an hour's worth of budget study sessions. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to give a brief overview of where we're at with the 2018 preliminary budget. And then after that, we'll have presentations by the nonprofit entities. I will do my best to keep my presentation to 20 minutes, and then probably have 10 minutes for each nonprofit, and then hopefully leave us a little bit of time at the end if there's questions. But again, this is really just the first step in the budget process, in the public budget process for us. And I thought it'd be good to give this presentation first so everybody in the room kind of understands, and it's a good opportunity to kind of share information. So I will do my best to go through this expeditiously for the sake of time. So 2018 preliminary budget overview. And again, the key word in this is preliminary. Please note that all numbers that are presented this evening hopefully won't change, but likely could based on a lot of variables that are outside of the city's control still at this time in mid-November or mid-October. So as with every budget, we have certain budget goals that we want to accomplish. Although those may seem kind of obvious, it's important to keep the eye on the ball in these and recognize the fact that these are the things that constrain our budget and what the parameters are that we look to when we create every budget. We obviously want to have a balanced budget. By law, we have to have one. Stay within levy limits, qualify for expenditure restraint, no reduction in services, and no new borrowing. Those are our goals for our budget this year. It probably will be our goals for several budgets moving forward. Hopefully someday that fifth checkbox drops off, but until then, that remains kind of one of the goals of the budget. I'm going to have to kind of follow along on here. Our previous budgets. So the 2016 budget, which was last year's budget that we operated under last year, the 2017 adopted budget, which is what we're operating in right now. And this graph just basically shows the general expenditures, general fund expenditures, meaning what do we, when we collect tax dollars or other revenue sources, what do we spend money on? And you'll see that in 2016, we had about a 9% increase in our overall expenditures, but last year, we only had a 1.32% increase in expenditures. And then the city's tax rate is below. We went from 9.53 in the mill rate in 2016 to 9.84 in the mill rate in 2017. And we're at the point in the process for the 2018 budget where we will not be able to calculate that tax rate until we have specific parameters from the state, which hopefully will come by the end of this month. So when we have our next budget discussion on November 8th, we'll hopefully be able to solidify those numbers a little bit more. In 2018, so you just saw what we did in '16 and '17, what we're proposing in 2018 is a slight, slight increase in expenditures, about a 1.23% increase, which is less than CPI. And that's the general fund expenditures. So that's again, what the tax dollars would be utilized for. And we'll go into greater detail on each one, on what makes up that $4.7 million. Contributing factors in the 2018 budget construction. In 2017, well, 2016, 2017 tax year, we saw substantial growth in the community, substantial growth in value. And that has a direct impact on the city's tax rate, and then also conversely, our levy limits. The city saw net new construction increase by 1.43%, which may not seem like a lot, but in terms of past experience, that is a substantial increase in our net new construction. And I'll show you what that means in real dollars shortly in another slide. Other contributing factors is expenditure restraint. We've talked about that every year ad nauseam, and we'll talk about it this year again. It's an important component of the budget, maybe one of the most important components of the budget. Expenditure restraint is a cap that is imposed upon local municipalities by the state of Wisconsin, indicating that you cannot increase expenditures greater than a certain percentage that the state gives us. This year, we're estimating that we're not allowed to increase our expenditures by more than $73,000. We won't know that number for certain until probably October 30th, October 31st. If we qualify for expenditure restraint, which we have every year that I've been here and probably every year before that expenditure restraint was in place, you qualify for additional state aid the following year. That state aid, we anticipate, or we know, will be $122,000 in 2019. So if we qualify for expenditure restraint in '18, we know we'll get a state aid piece in '19. Chuck, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. If you don't qualify that for one year, does that hurt you in the future?
Yes.
So it keeps rolling along?
So if we don't qualify for expenditure restraint in '18, we lose the state aid in '19 of $122,000.
Right, but what happens in '20?
It resets.
Okay, so it's a one-year penalty only?
Yeah, yep.
Right, so if you wanted to be ridiculous and go $500,000 over for one year?
We can't, because the levy limits, we could not.
Levy limits won't let you do that anyway?
Yeah, it's a double cap, yep. Unless we go to referendum to exceed our levy limit. The last piece is an affordability piece. This is a little bit of a subjectivity piece, but it's one that, ever since I've been here, this is my fourth budget, I talk about two major components of the budget. There's certainly things that we can do within a budget, but the question comes down to should we do those things? We may be able to do that based on levy limits, borrowing capacity. We could violate expenditure restraint, but then the question comes down to should. And I believe every decision we make, we should check both of those boxes before we proceed. We can do it, yes. Can we do it? Yes. But should we do it? The answer may be no. And we can talk about that as we move through the process. But Chuck's example of violating expenditure restraint could be one of those things. Can we violate expenditure restraint? Yes, we can. Legally, we absolutely can. Should we do it? I would say no. And the reason being is that loss of state aid. It would really put us behind the eight ball in that 2019 budget. City growth. So we'll whittle in on that. City growth is an important component of the budget because it directly affects levy limits and how our levy limit is established. The city realized an overall increase of $27 million in equalized value last year. That is a substantial number. And I will say, only two times in the last 10 years has the city actually seen that number be positive, let alone at that height. And that's been two of the last three years we've seen that number be positive. All previous years in that 10 years, it was negative. So $27 million in overall equalized value is a substantial increase, which has a direct impact on our levy limits. Levy limits, again, are increased based on net new construction. We saw on the last slide that net new construction was 1.43%. So what this means to me, I guess in a nutshell, is that as far as growth is concerned and value growth, we are headed in the right direction. Some of that is a product of the national economy, some of it, I will say, is a product of what we are doing right here in Milton every day. A little bit more on levy limits, probably more information than anybody cares about, but this is the state statute that dictates what levy limits are. You have to have a mill rate over five. It's only for cities and villages and counties. The state imposes levy limits. There are ways that you can adjust the levy limit through special caveats. We will have one in this budget, as we've had in many other years, because we are part of a joint fire district. We're allowed to increase our levy limit for that line item only by CPI plus 2%. And we'll talk about that actually at the November 8th meeting. But it's something that we've done every year that I've been here, and I know we did it every year before I came too. So as it stands right now in terms of levy limits, and this I think goes back to Chuck's question, this budget is under, as proposed right now, is under the levy limit by $89,000. So what that means is, could we increase the budget by $89,000? Yes, we could, but we would violate expenditure restraint in doing so. But what this means is we are taxing less, we're collecting less taxes than what the state allows us, as weird as that sounds. Expenditure restraint. I said earlier that this may be the most important variable in the budget. This is the secondary cap that the state imposes on local municipalities and how much you can increase your expenditures. And then you'll see below the corresponding state aid that comes with it. And you can see every year that has increased. At some point, there will be a tipping point where that number will either level out or go down. But each time one municipality doesn't meet expenditure restraint, the state has the same amount of funds available in that pool, and it gets, the denominator gets smaller and smaller and smaller, and therefore the numerator gets bigger and bigger and bigger, or the quotient, I guess, gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So we're continuing to see an increase in that state aid bonus, so it continues to behoove us to qualify for that expenditure restraint. Again, a little bit more information on expenditure restraint, what expenditure restraint means. As we said, we are estimating the expenditure restraint number to be 1.9%, which is what it was last year, so we're flatlining that. That number could go up. Some believe that it will go up, but we don't know that now, so we wanted to conservatively project just a flatline expenditure restraint. So here's kind of where the rubber meets the road in terms of budget. As you saw on the previous slide, yes, we're levying less than what we are allowed to by state, by the state, but as the budget is currently constructed, we are over the expenditure restraint cap by $11,257. So what that means is, if we were forced to pass the budget today, if we wanted to qualify for expenditure restraint, we would have to trim $11,257 from the budget. So that's where some of those difficult decisions will need to be made as we continue down this process. Now again, I will repeat that these numbers are preliminary, they are estimates, but many of the variables that we need to create the budget have already been set by the state. The last one would be that expenditure restraint piece, and we're already saying 1.9, so we're projecting level funding from the state on expenditure restraint. If that number goes up, the amount that we would need to cut will decrease. If that number goes down, the amount that we'll need to cut will increase. So we're obviously hoping for that number to at least remain flat, if not go up. But we do know that the state has previously said they will not go past 2% in that expenditure restraint at any time, and I guess we believe them. So what does this all mean? In the city's 2018 preliminary budget, we will not levy to the max. At this time, the budget would not levy to the max, and we'd be less, $8,929 less than allowable. The city can only increase its expenditure restraints, expenditures by $73,000 in 2018 in order to qualify for the expenditure restraint program, which is that $122,000 bonus in 2019. And as presented on October 17th, the city will still need to reduce expenditures in this budget in order to qualify for expenditure restraint by $11,257. So what does that, what is that impact? It's hard to tell the total impact because we don't know exactly what that expenditure restraint number is, but we know that we'll be collecting less tax dollars than permitted by the state, than allowed by the state, and that we will not know the final tax rate until the next time we get together in November. So once they finalize that ERP number, we'll have a better feel for where expenditures need to be at. And then the last piece is the assessment ratio. We haven't even talked about that yet. It's yet another wonderful imposition by the state in which they get to set the assessment ratio for a community. Now, that does not impact the levy. That does not impact whatsoever how much tax dollars are collected. It only impacts the tax rate, meaning it only impacts how much our tax dollars get spread over the value of the community. And the state establishes that as well. And that's one of those numbers we don't know until middle, late November. That's generally the last piece of the puzzle that we get at local municipalities, is that assessment ratio. At that point though, it's somewhat out of our control, it doesn't really matter, the levy doesn't change, it really impacts the tax rate. Last year, we saw an assessment ratio of 103%, which drove the tax rate down. This year, we're projecting it to be at 100, which is where it always should be, but we don't know until the state tells us. And if you ask them what goes into the assessment ratio, bring your popcorn, because it just goes on and on and on. I don't think they know, honestly. And another note I will make, I don't see the courier here, but this will not be impacted. The assessment ratio will not be impacted on this tax bill whatsoever by the citywide revaluation. That won't take into effect until next year. So if people are saying, "Well, my house just got reassessed," and that doesn't even show up on this 2018 bill yet. So that'll be when we're sitting here next year from now, and I've got less hair and what I've got less is gray. So in talking about tax levies, so this is just the changes to the tax levy. So what we've done is we've started with the 2017 tax levy, $3.137 million. And now what we're going to do is we're going to layer in the pieces beneath it that show where there are changes in the preliminary 2018 budget that changed that tax levy. Nonproperty tax revenue increases. So this is a levy, so this is the expenditure, and we're seeing revenues increase, so that's why it shows up as a negative number. So it's decreasing that levy. Employee relations go up $58,000. Operational changes account for an additional $21,000. And nonprofit requests have increased $5,402 this year. So that would put the preliminary budget tax levy at $3,214,841. So that goes back to that slide a few ago, and it was about a 1.2% increase in the levy, or in general fund expenditures. So what makes up those categories? So we'll drill down on each one. Nonproperty tax revenue. Expenditure restraint aid went up $8,100, as we showed a couple slides ago. Interest earnings have gone up $4,100. Again, these are revenues, so it's decreasing the levy, that's why they're showing as negatives. There's been other changes that have resulted in an increase in revenue of $1,100. Licensing and permits are going to increase by about $200. Shared revenue and computer aid has decreased by $922. An estimated decrease in state highway aid of $4,000. So yes, despite the fact that the governor and the state passed a budget that increased roadway spending, we are still seeing a decrease. We're just not seeing a decrease as much as we would have had they not increased roadway spending. That's all I can say about that. We are seeing a decrease in roadway aid in 2018. Employee relations. So again, if you go back a couple slides, we talked about employee relations being about $58,000 increase in the levy. This is what makes up that $58,000. There's a 3% partial wage adjustment for some employees in the organization. It results in a $27,000 impact on the budget. We saw an 8% increase in our health insurance rates. We live in a world where 8% increase in health insurance rates is a good thing. Last year, it was 16, and in other places, we've heard as high as 20. So in 8%, we were, believe it or not, we were happy to see 8%, only 8%. That's a $14,000 impact on our budget. We're increasing the buyout for employees who do not take our health insurance. That's a $7,644 or $64 increase. We're reallocating DPW time. We do this every year. Sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down, but we want to make sure that the budget accurately reflects where employees are spending their time. We have a lot of DPW employees that spread their time out over different funding sources. And again, tonight, we're talking specifically about the general fund. So what we have seen over historical information is that employees are spending more time on general fund activities than they would be on an enterprise fund activity such as stormwater, or wastewater, or water utility. So again, just to reflect reality, there's a reallocation of DPW time to $10,000. That doesn't mean that we're spending $10,000 more than we were last year in DPW, it's just a reallocation of that funding pot to accurately reflect where things are at. 1.5% increase for police union, as agreed to in their contract last year, that's an $8,600 impact. Level funding police wages. We've seen a lot of turnover in the police department. Well, turnover is probably the right word. We've seen some retirements and a departure of one police officer. So we're trying to stabilize those wage rates, so as we hire new officers in at lower wage rates, we're not hit multiple years in a row. So this kind of acts as almost a payroll contingency. Again, it doesn't mean that we're necessarily spending an additional $35,000 in the police department, but we're trying to level fund those wages to spread out that increase that we will see as officers move, new officers move up through the ranks. And then we've decreased contingency in this budget by $44,000. That's a substantial decrease to contingency. Last year, we had $70,000 plus a payroll contingency of 30, and we're decreasing both of those by a total of $44,000. And that's simply to balance the budget.
What you mean by contingency is you're taking out of the fund, the fund balance?
No, not fund balance. No, we budget, we budget a $70,000 contingency each year, or we have. It's gone up and down, I think it was like 56 two years ago. And we're decreasing that funded contingency.
Okay, so you have a contingency, and you're taking so much percentage of that to this object?
Right, yep.
Yeah, we had like 85 last year, and we got it down to like 40.
Operational changes. The fire department budget has shown an increase of the city's portion of $18,000. The fire commission has kind of preliminary approved that at their last, at their September meeting, and we'll be talking about that again in November. Law enforcement increases $8,400. This is for various pieces of equipment and operational changes. Elections will increase next year, because we have more elections next year. We'll have at least three next year, potentially four. Legal increases $6,300. That's based on the contract that was approved last year by the council. There was an annual increase in that. Other miscellaneous increases, decreases, $4,800. There's, you know, ups and downs of $10, $20, $30, $100 here and there. This slide would be, you know, 20 slides long if we included all the $10 changes. So that's $4,800. Increase in water rates for the splash pad. We've seen water usage continue to increase at the splash pad, plus the city enacted a rate change last year, so this accurately reflects, yes, we pay, we have to pay water bills too. Increase in mayor council training budget. This is a reflection of historical usage of that, increase of $2,100. City garage utilities and equipment maintenance is decreasing by about $5,000. The assessor contract that we entered into last year has stepped down throughout the years, so it will decrease $12,000 next year. And then retiree and OPEB funding, we went through that major overhaul of our retiree and OPEB funding last year, and that will be decreasing by $12,000 in this next year's budget as well. So that's how we got to that $21,000. Nonprofit requests, which we'll hear a lot more on in a little bit, and I'll try to hurry up. The Historical Society has asked for $10,000. They received $10,000 last year, that's why there's just, there's no increases. It's in the budget at $10,000. We haven't increased it or decreased it in this budget. YMCA scholarships last year were not funded, they requested $1,200, so that shows an increase of $1,200. And last year, the gathering place requested $10,000, and they were awarded $5,788 or $98. And they've requested $10,000 this year, so it shows that increase, that $4,200 increase there. Capital requests. We level funded capital from last year. Last year, we had about $182,000 in capital. This year, we've got $187,000. And this is the list of items that we feel we can provide with that. So we worked backwards to that number. We had, we had a number, $185,000, and then we said, what can we get done for that amount? Obviously, there's certain things that we have to do, replacing the squad cars on a regular basis. But other items in here, tool cat, including the trade-in, brush chiper, pavement roller, half a squad car replacement, tree replacement, water heater replacement at the DPW garage, rolling stock savings, that's savings in trade-ins and things like that. Weapon replacement for PD, they need to do that on a semi-regular basis. And then replacing one of our zero-turn mowers, and that brings us to 87. So there is a slight increase in capital this year. But again, we looked at what could we do for the 182 that we had last year, and this is the list that we came up with. Here are all the things that didn't make the list this year. And this list will, this list will always exist. There's always things that we won't be able to fund, but these are things that we'll likely see this time next year. Parks mower, we need a new snowplow, sidewalk repair installations need to increase, library parking lot, repainting the splash pad, Highway 59 turn signals, seal coating the cemetery and Cross Ridge Park, Liberty Park fencing, a commercial carpet cleaner. I will say, some of these items may be able to be taken care of yet in the 2017 budget if there's residual funds left, and some of these may be able to have an alternate funding source, but we wanted to keep kind of an active list of things going so we can review this last, next year when we get here. And hopefully, some of these items, by the time we're in this place next year, are already satisfied or crossed off.
Yeah, didn't we do that this year with the trailer?
Trailer, yep. We were able to find an alternative funding source midway through the year this year for the equipment trailer, which was an item that showed up on this list last year. Actually, it showed up on the previous list, and then it was removed at the end. And then we were able to find an alternate funding source. So we, I'm confident that there are some of those items on there that we still will be able to accomplish, either through residual funds in '17 or through alternate funding sources in '18. But again, I think it's important for folks to see kind of what's still out there. And as soon as one item falls off, a new item will come on. It's just the cost of doing business.
Do you have like a five-year plan, capital expenditure plan as you go forward?
No, we do not. And the reason we don't have that is because we don't plan to borrow anytime for the next several years. So we levy for our capital expenditures.
Does it stack that last slide?
Yep. So we go back to the very, very beginning. We talked about our budget goals. As presented, this preliminary budget, again, can and will change, meets the following goals. It's a balanced budget, it stays within levy limits, there's no reduction service, and there's no new borrowing, but as we talked about, it does not qualify for expenditure restraint. So there's still work to do on this budget, as we would anticipate. We still don't know the assessment ratio, as we talked about. We still don't know the property and workers' compensation insurance rate, which is likely probably going to be negligible even if it does increase. And we still don't know the final expenditure restraint cap, which will be a big component of decisions moving forward. And like I said, hopefully, we have that by the next time we're together. Budget takeaways. This budget represents a continuation of service from previous years. There are no staff reductions and no reductions of service. This budget has no new borrowing component. But with that being said, here's one of Dan and I's favorite points, not favorite in the sense that we enjoy it, but favorite points to help kind of keep people reminded of it. Currently, 26.7 cents of every dollar collected by the City of Milton goes to debt service.
Isn't that down like half a penny?
It's down, it was 27.2 cents last year. So it's down, trending in the right direction.
And we also want to get that down even further.
Oh, yeah. We just keep it there. That is a, that is a huge boat anchor around our budget and will continue to be that way for a long time. When I say long time, I say several years, probably five years at least. That is a difficult thing to overcome. Go ahead.
I don't think that it's really a reflection of any of you up there, but I want you to make a comment on this 26.7 cents. How much of this is principal reduction versus interest payment?
I don't, I think Dan would probably have to talk about principal reduction versus interest payments. There's still a lot of interest payments out there. We're getting closer to it all being principal reduction, but not all of it.
So maybe Dan?
Yeah, we don't have any interest only anymore.
Right, so in the...
This is the first year.
Right, so can...
Seventeen months.
Yeah, can you ex...
So we're starting to trend correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So Dan, can you just explain kind of like where we came from and the steps we took and where we are right now?
So up until this year, we had two outstanding debt issues on building projects that were interest-only for the first three to five years. This year, we made our first principal payments on this building and the public works garage. So we're at least making principal payments now on every debt issue. I don't know if that answers your question, Chuck. I don't, I don't have the specifics in front of me as to the $857,000 that's in the '18 budget, how much is principal and interest off the top of my head?
So just, just so...
We're just starting to trend downhill.
Yes, yes, yeah. And that's, that has, that has not happened by accident. That was a conscious effort undertaken by city staff and the council to trend that in the other way.
And our debt service doesn't fall below $800,000 till like '22 or '23. So we're in the 800 to 850 range for the next five to six years.
And can you talk about the refinancing that you did too?
And the refinancing, we did, I don't even remember how much it was anymore. It was, it was several million.
7.65 million.
Thank you. That refinanced every outstanding debt issue that could possibly be refinanced between now and 2022. So there, I've heard from people, well, can't we pay off debt early? Can we refinance anything? The answer to that is no. The answer to that is no, because we, we did that in one false swoop last summer. And that was also a conscious decision. Because there was, there's some debt that's callable next year that we're going to be paying off with library donation money, because we took on debt from the library last year. So we've, we've gotten our interest rates down as low as we can possibly get them for the next several years.
And how much money did you save by refinancing?
Close to a million, or maybe just a hair over a million. Over the course of 10 years. And the other trend that I talked about in that, in that borrowing we did last summer, that also refinanced several road projects and capital items that were purchased in the mid to late 2000s, like '07 to '09 time period, that were scheduled to be paid off over 20 years. And they're still being scheduled to be paid off over 20 years. So that, that's another one of those hurdles that we, that we're still dealing with. All those projects that were done a decade ago, we're still paying for, for the next 10 years.
And our, our goal as a council, and I've been a strong advocate, I'm sure the rest of you feel that way too, as we discussed this, is we want to be in the 15 to 20% range and maybe even less than that. And operate at that level constantly as far as debt to the total budget.
And the, and the recommended ranges for debt service are no more than 15 to 18%. So we're, we're at least 10% above that threshold right now.
I don't want anybody to suggest or think that, that I'm unhappy with what you're doing. I understand that this is a situation, an imperative from the council. I was curious, what do you think, if you're people? I don't have to tell you that. You guys know that.
Yeah, I, yeah, yep. Last bullet point on this slide, and I think then there's only one more slide after this. Again, don't mean to kind of continue to bang this drum, but in order to qualify for expenditure restraint, we will need to cut $11,000 from this budget in order to qualify for that. Items could change between now and then. As folks, we're in open enrollment right now. As health insurance changes, if somebody goes from a family to a single or jumps off our insurance, that changes our budget picture dramatically, especially in a small organization. And those are things we won't, we don't quite know yet, but, you know, we will as, as this process moves on. Last slide. This is just, I guess, for everybody's reminder up here. And then for information out in the, in the audience, this is kind of our budget schedule. We're approving the budget publication tonight at the council meeting. Again, that's state, the state requires you to publish a budget. It does not have to be the final. It shouldn't be the final, in my opinion. So we'll be publishing that tonight. It'll be in the paper on the 26th. We'll have the budget public hearing on November 14th and then adoption of the budget on November 28th. So clear your schedules and make sure you attend, because those are always exciting events. So, I took a lot longer than I wanted to. I blame Chuck, but that's.
Thank you, Chuck. We appreciate this opportunity to talk in more detail.
So we can, you know, we'll have an item on the agenda at the council meeting tonight. So if there's any of these things that we want to discuss in greater detail, we certainly can. Obviously, we have a meeting on November 8th as well, and we have a meeting on November 14th and a meeting on November 28th. And we can always schedule additional special meetings, public hearing, or a budget study session meetings. But I kind of wanted to give folks a snapshot of where we're at, where we are at. And I thought with our nonprofit partners and friends in the audience, that they might like to know kind of where we're at as well. So again, I apologize for going long.
And thank you for your comments, Chuck. We do appreciate it.
So, so what we talked about for the nonprofit presentations is that we would go in alphabetical order. So that would put the Gathering Place first, right? And then Historic Society and then YMCA?
Because we're not using "the."
Yeah, we're not taking "the."
Good evening. All right, all right. We'll make this work. Well, Al, since you were so long-winded, I guess I'll try and not be. But that's hard for me sometimes. So, is this too loud, Carrie? Is this too loud? Good? All right. Good evening. I'm Dave Fisher from the Gathering Place. I'm the executive director. Thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight. Here we are again, faced with some difficulties regarding some of the decisions on the allocations on the budget. Speaking for all of us here tonight, you know, we appreciate your consideration regarding our appeals. So in front of you, hopefully, Al, did you get the information?
Emailed it out.
Okay. Everybody's got the email with regards to our fact sheet. And did they get the newsletter handed out? You're about to receive the October newsletter from the Gathering Place. But anyway, I'll just move forward because we're going to, we're going to short on time and I'll try and be as quick as I can. But anyway, you're going to get the newsletter in front of you. It goes out every month. It details our activities for the month. And if you've never read it, this is a good one to read because it, you will be impressed on what you see day-to-day in our operations that is detailed in our newsletter. Also in front of you is our, our 2016 fact sheet. You know, it's a very interesting summary of the Gathering Place information and data. The one thing on that fact sheet on the front page that I want to impress with you is the fact that Marion Allen's Foundation does not pay the way of the Gathering Place. I think that's a very big misconception in our, in our community. If it did, I wouldn't be here tonight. But in, in reality, the Allen Foundation supports us 50%. And we have to make up the difference of that generating our budget and generating runs through fundraising, rentals, donations, and our memberships. So please keep that in mind. There's a, there's a misconception that the Allen Foundation covers the bills of the Gathering Place. And that simply is not true. But speaking of our membership, you know, we stand at about 700 strong. You know, and by the way, you do not have to be a member to participate in activities and programs at the Gathering Place. But anyway, of the 400 members that the Gathering Place has, three, I'd guess that three-quarters of them reside in Milton. You know, and we guesstimate, we've talked about this today, but we guesstimate the average age of our member is 71 years old. And when you think about it, those that live, those that are living here in Milton for that length of time have been paying taxes in this community, in some cases for 50 years. That, my friends, computes to thousands of dollars over the course of time per member. So do you see where I'm going here with this? You know, I believe it's your responsibility on behalf of many of Milton's seniors to find funding within your budget to support the Gathering Place. If you really want to get a good sense of what the Gathering Place does for the city of Milton, I suggest you attend our upcoming Veterans Day celebration. It starts at the Milton Area Veterans Memorial for a program. Anissa's going to say a few words. We've got the folks from the Edgerton VFW. They're going to have a 21-gun salute. Nate Pierce from the high school in charge of the band there is going to play taps, his rendition of that. Immediately following that ceremony, we're going to go back to the Gathering Place. We have a program there. It's going to be lunch provided for veterans and their spouses at no cost. And it concludes the celebration. We'll have a rendition by the Blue Notes Concert or Choir. They're going to play a few patriotic songs and it'll be a great sing-along. Basically, it's a very powerful day of tribute. And we do it because we think it's the right thing to do. And really, that's what the Gathering Place is all about. So, the Gathering Place is open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. Here's some statistics about our program. We average about 65 visitors a day that comes through the Gathering Place. And you know, that computes to about 16,300 folks that move through our doors annually. Now, this does not include visitors that attend for weddings, parties, special events, and fundraisers. This year, we will have hosted 46 special events and six fundraising events. And that will bring in an additional 6,350 people into Milton. So, the numbers compute to 22,650 guests in 2014, or 2017, come through the Gathering Place. You know, these folks just don't come and, they just don't come and leave, you know? They spend time. They spend money here in Milton. So I ask you, do you think it's a good idea to support your local senior activity center that generates such positive outcomes for the city of Milton? I would think that you do. I'm not sure if you know this, but the Gathering Place hosts one of Rock County's senior dining programs. It's a, it's a program that runs through the county. And they use our kitchen and our dining room Monday through Friday, where seniors can come in and they can get a nutritious meal on a donation basis. This program also includes home-delivered meals for shut-ins that are eligible for this program. This program is very similar to programs that you're aware of, Meals on Wheels programs, very similar to that. But this year alone, we're projected to deliver 6,500 meals out of the kitchen at the Gathering Place to homebound seniors in the area. You know, and that, just to compute that a little bit, our volunteers not only deliver these meals, but they're doing a health check on these folks. And a lot of times, the folks that get these meals, their only contact might be our volunteer that's delivering that meal every single day. So it's a very, very powerful program and we're glad to be a part of that. You know, I could go on and on. Howie, I could go on and on about all the things that, that we do for the city. Concerts in the park, hot dogs with Santa, Pumpkin Fest, AARP tax services. We collaborate programs with the high school, certainly with the Milton Chamber and the Milton House. You know, I could go on and on about all the wonderful things that we do and our successes. So some of you might think, oh, the Gathering Place is doing so great. They have all these wonderful programs, then why do we really have to support them if they're doing so well? Well, that, my friends, is the wrong attitude to take. You know, what if programs like, for example, St. Luke's Children's Hospital took that philosophy? Oh, and people thought, oh, you know, St. Luke's is doing just fine. We don't need to support them. They, they really do just fine. And, you know, what would happen to that program? You know, people donate to their cause because they're great at what they do. They want their program to continue and they do things very, very well. That's why people support programs. You know, we're very similar to that. I feel we're very similar to that. We need your support to continue doing, so we can continue to do what we do well. And the citizens of Milton deserve that. You know, before I forget, and I'm, I'm getting done here rather quickly. Before I forget, the Gathering Place is celebrating 25 years this year, service to the Milton Area community. Marion Allen donated the Gathering Place. She built this place, spent over a million bucks to build it. And she did it for one reason, because she loved Milton. She loved the people of Milton. You know, and we are so blessed to have such a wonderful community resource. And then just one little additional thing is that we, at the Gathering Place, we recently were accredited by the Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers. And right now, we're one of the state's finest senior activities and centers. And, and that award was just given to us a couple of weeks ago. But before I step down, let me say a couple of things. Let's get serious a minute. Let's get really serious a minute about the city of Milton's budget. The city of Milton's budget, a budget of roughly $4,700,000, awarded the Gathering Place last year 5,800 bucks. That computes, that computes to 0.12% of Milton's actual budget. 0.12%. So are you folks telling, are you telling Milton, the Milton community, that seniors who've contributed thousands of dollars over the course of time and years to the city of Milton, that their program is not worth supporting? 5,800 bucks of $4,700,000. You know, so please, I just beg you, I don't beg you, please consider our appeal. I think it's a good one. And I'd love to answer any questions you might have about the Gathering Place and/or our program.
Dave, could you talk a little more about the accreditation?
Yes, the accreditation, we got accredited by the, by the senior centers, the Wisconsin Senior Centers Association. It's a five-year accreditation. It's a process of which we, we go through, well, you guys are familiar. We go through a big old manual. They go through everything. The goal is that it's always, the goal of senior centers to be best practice. And we go through every step of everything that we do, from our board of directors, our, our bylaws, to the programs that we have and so on and so forth. And we, we were, we were reviewed and we got the highest standard with regards to their accreditation. And we got a five-year accreditation for our, because of the program that we have. And there's only 33 senior centers in the state of Wisconsin that have that accreditation. All right. Al, thank you.
Thank you. You did a great job.
My name is Carrie Kleba. I'm executive director of the Milton Historical Society. The Milton Historical Society is more commonly associated with the Milton House. And we are the stewards of the 1844 Stagecoach Inn and only national historic landmark in Rock County. But frankly, we are so much more than that. The mission of the Milton Historical Society is also to preserve the history of Milton, what makes us a community. We preserve the story of us. And that is to say, within our archives, we have over 19,750 accession items, countless research materials in our library, and this extends from microfilm, scrapbooks, love letters, hatpins, pianos. Where did you get the pictures on these very walls? That's the story of the Milton Historical Society. That's what we do for the community. Now, how do we tell that story? Well, the Milton House is by far the single biggest tourism draw in Milton. And we are the gateway destination. That is to say, it doesn't end at the Milton House. It only begins there. We've become the de facto tourist information center for this area. Literally thousands come to Milton every year and they learn the story at the Milton House. We've seen a 32% increase in attendance since last year, and that's year-to-date. The story's getting out there. When I was preparing this presentation, I did a quick Google search, things to do in Rock County. And this is a good test for your eyesight. Can you see what's listed as number one? It's getting out there. We're striving very hard to bring people into this community. And we're able to do that from the city of Milton's support. Now, that support translates into very real money. This is the Milton House's economic impact. As the single biggest tourism draw, we know that tourists in Rock County spent $2,350,000. And that translates to 28.4 in state and local taxes. It starts at the Milton House. They then eat in our restaurants. They buy gas at the local Arntz Mini-Mart. They go shopping at the local Merchant Row. They play in our parks. And more importantly, we send them to the other businesses. We send them to those other historical societies. We wouldn't be able to do that without the city of Milton's support. We bring them in because of you. Now, we are also host to several events that frankly, people associate with Milton. And it starts with our Arts and Crafts on the Lawn and our award-winning Civil War Living History Days. But it also includes exhibits. We host the Milton School District Student Art Show. And this year, 2017, we hosted an exhibit featuring the joining of Milton and Milton Junction, 50 years together. And we continue to expand our programming. Not only do we have new events this year, including Ghosts and Goblets, but next year, in collaboration with the Gathering Place, with the Chamber and other community businesses, we are including more programming designed to bring in not only more community involvement, but more people from outside of Milton. We are still nonetheless operating on a deficit budget. But this is largely due to something I had to talk to you guys about last year. The operational, operational expenses of the Milton House average roughly 1/3. The buildings were falling down and we had to fix them or risk losing them. So we did a major capital campaign and thanks to the support of our friends and of our community members, we've been able to tackle some much-needed preservation work. Everybody recognizes this eyesore. This was the stable, the anchor of Goodrich Park. It had a roof that was falling in and frankly, had been neglected for years. But thanks to our community, their financial support, but also volunteerism, we now have a building with renewed purpose. We have plans for hosting events in here. The Milton House itself, I'm so sorry the picture's so small, but it was cracking. Anybody that was near it, literally the grout was falling out from around the windows. But thanks to a partnership with the Bricklayers and Allied Craft Workers of Wisconsin and that capital campaign, we were able to fill those cracks and preserve the building in trust for Milton. Now, this is an example of that frustration that every executive director of Milton House has ever had, just when you're getting ahead, an emergency happens. This is the 1837 Pioneer Cabin, the oldest building that stands in Milton and it became a safety hazard. I don't know if you can see from where you are at, but that is chinking, literally falling off. So that means when I had school tours going through there, they risked having that plop down on their head. But again, thanks to the community's support, thanks to the Bricklayers, that has now been preserved again in trust. Most relevant to hear, the eyesore is gone. No longer, when visitors are coming, are they greeted with potholes and gravel. They now have safe, reliable access to the city of Milton. This is the first impression that Milton deserves. We get the word out thanks to our sources of revenue and those are very finite. They are from our school tours, they are from our membership dues, but most importantly, they're from the direct financial support from the community of Milton. That is how we are able to afford to place advertising, that's how we're able to afford to keep our doors open. The Milton House has been the epicenter of Milton since its inception and supporting us is not contributing to charity, it's investing in our mission to promote and preserve those things that make Milton Milton. Our archives, our special events, and our engagement with the community, that's what makes Milton so special and it's possible because of your support. So like Dave, I would ask that you please allocate funds in this year's budget towards the Milton House and we ask for the $10,000. Anything less than that, I don't think we could make our budget. So thank you for your commitment towards preserving Milton's history and if you do have any questions, I'm here for you.
I know oftentimes I will ask city staff, "Well, can't you find a grant for that?"
That's a good question.
So, um, can't you find a grant for any of this or what does the grant situation look like? Because I think it's important that the public understands that what steps you take to actually be financially independent.
We absolutely have received many grants this year, actually, in our budget, I believe. The problem is, is that grant funding is program-specific or project-specific and so Civil War Living History Days funded by a grant. Uh, preservation work on our archives funded by a grant. Keeping the lights on by an advertising space, that is not grant-funded, that's community-supported through the city of Milton.
Thank you. Okay. Dave, do you have anything? Dave, I just wondered if you had any questions or anything?
No, I just had a couple of comments to make. Um, I appreciate the presentations and I don't want to take anything away from those presentations because I think, uh, both of the parties that have spoken now, uh, their organizations are a tremendous value to the city and, uh, I don't want to take away from that. However, as I was instructed, I wish for the council to keep this in mind, when I was instructed in my first year in the council 10 years ago, I was told our responsibility as council members with regard to the budget is to use the available resources to fund the operational and capital needs of our city. Funding of donations to nonprofits may be a good, uh, feel-good issue, but that type of funding is not our primary, primary responsibility. As if, as Dan and Al have already stated, cuts to the budget will be required to meet the state restrictions and requirements and the council has no business discussing using any part of our limited resources to make donations to anyone. We cannot justify cutting any capital item or operational need to make donations possible. Any cuts to the budget must be made through, uh, cutting, uh, non-primary, primary, uh, that's not the word I wanted to use, but, uh, non-essential items in the budget, which is the donations bracket. Anything, any other way to make cuts would be irresponsible and we would not be filling our responsibilities as council members, is the way I see it.
And we have just one more presentation. If, does anybody have any other questions or comments for Carrie?
I have a question.
Um, you could... Maybe sign up at the council meeting, 'cause...
It'll be like the second item on the agenda.
Right. 'Cause we didn't budget a public comment, it was just for presentations for the council for this part of it.
Um, I do have a question, Carrie. Do you, can you give me, I don't know if you can tell me this right off of your, right off the back of your shoulders there, but I'm just wondering, your, um, your heating bill last month?
I can't speak for last month, I can tell you what we've paid so far.
Okay. And then, could you just tell us again how many students you had, how many visitors came through?
We are at, um, total visitors this year. Thank you for your patience as I get that number. Uh, 7,397. As for what we have spent so far, and this is utilities just at the Milton House, it has been $10,000.
Carrie, does the Milton House have an endowment fund of any kind?
We have no endowment.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate the opportunity to present.
Thank you. And our next presenter will be the YMCA.
Test, test. Okay. All right, I'll be quick. Um, hi, I'm Matt Gibson, Director of the Parker YMCA and thank you for letting us present here today. Uh, the YMCA, uh, the Parker YMCA is asking for $1,200 for the purpose of funding youth scholarships for 40 either at-risk or financially-challenged youth in the Milton area. Um, I prepared a short video, it's not very long, I promise, um, and this really, I think, captures, uh, the mission of the Y very well. Anyway, um, while she's trying to get that to work, um, basically what's going on here is the kids are acting out the four core values of the YMCA and the four core values are number one, respect, number two, caring, number three, honesty, and number four is responsibility. And, um, in the 10 years that I've been at the Y, that's what I've always pushed for in all of the programs and to instill into our youth in the community and I'm really happy that we are able to bring that mission, uh, to the Milton area. It's, it's okay, if you can't get it to work, we'll just, okay.
All right. Respect!
Respect!
Carrie!
Carrie!
Honesty!
Honesty!
Responsibility!
Responsibility!
Yeah! Respect!
Respect!
Carrie!
Carrie!
Honesty!
Honesty!
Responsibility!
Responsibility!
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 Yeah! Yeah!
Honestly, that's my favorite, uh, just being able to facilitate those types of programs and, um, you know, those kids, I, if you could tell, like, they really got it. They know what it means. They, they came up, uh, we facilitate what, you know, the respect, caring, honesty, responsibility, we ask them, how do you, how do you show this to each other? And then they come up with the skit and as we facilitate it and then present, you know, to the other groups of kids. But again, I just want to share that with y'all. You probably haven't had a chance to see this for yourself at the Parker Y. And the Parker Y not only has a youth center inside of it, it is itself a youth center with the basketball gyms, the sports fields, uh, the fitness center for the youth, the fitness classes. Um, it's all really vitally important to get the youth involved, um, in, in all of, in all those aspects and in all the programs at the Y. So again, um, the Y is asking for $1,200 to go towards those youth scholarships for, for 2018. Um, that's all I have for you today. Did you guys have any questions?
Do those scholarships go directly for kids that live, um, within the city of Milton or is it all of Northern Rock County?
Uh, it would be, the majority would be directly in Milton, 80% of our, um, youth that come through for the Parker facility is directly from Milton, but of course, there are some families that travel from Whitewater and Edgerton as well.
Can you give us any idea about your membership, whether you've had a, a major increase in the last couple of years or...
We haven't, we have not increased membership, our standard membership fees have not been increased since I've been at the Y and I've been there for 10 years.
But has your, the amount of members increased?
Yes, it has. Um, I don't have that number in front of me, but we have grown. Um, it started with the vision of, you know, the site that was at Piggly Wiggly to, to grow a membership base in the northeast side of Janesville, again, to reach out to this area of Northern Rock County and the final vision, um, to bring everybody together in a full-service facility and cross your fingers, we'll have that pool soon.
I have a question. Do you find that children that are going over to the Y for programming are also going into the Milton Area Youth Center as well? Are they, are they a similar group of kids? Different group of kids?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I don't, I, we don't track, um, where else they have been, but actually, that'd be great for a survey. I, I actually really like that idea. I'm gonna write that down. But yeah, I'm actually not sure what the crossover...
...chance for partnerships.
Sure. Okay. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You know, and one comment that I, that I'll make, I had a phone call today and I kinda wanted to reassure folks in the audience, uh, you know, the decision for the nonprofit fundings is part of the larger budget process. Uh, so, you know, it's, it's not listed on the agenda tonight for action, so there won't be any decisions made tonight on, on allocations, it'll be part of the larger budget process. So with that being said, you know, feel free to stay tuned, feel free to reach out to me, feel free to stop in and get updates. Uh, I'd be more than happy to sit down with anybody and kinda say, "Okay, remember back on October 17th, we needed to cut 11,000? Well, now we're down to 2 and that could shake out like this." I'm more than happy to do that with anybody from the nonprofits, I'm happy to do that with anybody in the 53563, you know, I'm saying.
And you can sign up to speak at the council meeting that's gonna start in just a few minutes. And Inga is showing you the clipboard that you can sign up on for tonight. Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
We have anything, just roll right in.
Okay. I just, I don't have an agenda. Um, they're, they're gonna sign up to speak at the council meeting, 'cause we didn't have that on there.
So you're all gonna stay here for the council meeting so you can speak, so we can hear your individual concerns, right? Perfect.
And for team building, right? Like, you know, we do audience participation in our team building sessions, so we're excited for you all to be here tonight.
Anissa, it's very difficult to hear you.
Okay. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. I'll keep it pulled up there. Is it too low? Not too low?